Welcome, everybody, and thank you for coming to this public hearing today on the proposed updates to the Wetlands Protection Act and Water Quality Certification Regulations. My name is Stephanie Mora. I'm the Division Director for Wetlands and Waterways with Mass DEP, and I'm joined by several folks from our team here today. And I'll introduce Lisa Rhodes in a moment, who will be providing some remarks. What we'll do for the hearing today is I have a few sort of housekeeping context opening remarks to share with folks. Then Lisa Rhodes, our Wetlands Program Chief, will be offering a high-level overview presentation of the proposed regulations. And then we will turn it over to those who would like to offer oral testimony today. So that's the agenda. First, let me say that for those who would like to enable their closed caption feature, go into your toolbar at the bot—well, for me, it's at the bottom of my screen. If you click in the button that says "More," and usually it has three dots, you will find an option that says "Enable Captions" or "Captions." So that's a feature that you have to enable for yourself if you would like it. And if you have any questions about that, please put them in the chat, and hopefully Tori Wu on our team here can help you with that. The first thing I'd like to say is just to give a brief distinction between this public hearing and the prior public information sessions that were held in the previous weeks. For those of you who attended the public information sessions, one or more of them, those were fairly in-depth presentations followed by dialogue, question and answer. Presentation from that, as well as the recording of the question and answer and exchange among the DEP staff and the attendees. Those materials and those recordings are all available on our website for those of you who would like to either review them if you were there or see them for the first time. And my colleague Tori Wu will put that website link in the chat so that you can readily access that. Today's proceeding is a public hearing, and this is, you know, a slightly more formal affair. This is not an opportunity to engage in dialogue. This is your opportunity to offer oral testimony, to be part of the record for this regulatory proceeding. And the way we'll handle that today is, in order to try to accommodate anybody who would like to offer oral testimony, we ask that you—and I'm going to put these instructions in the chat. We ask that you put your name and affiliation in the chat if you would like to offer remarks today. And then, as Lisa provides her overview presentation, we're going to keep an eye on how many folks are in the queue. So we expect that folks will have roughly two to three minutes to offer their remarks today. If for some reason the doors are being beaten down and there's too many folks who have signed up in this session to offer oral testimony, I would let you know that there are two additional public hearings just like this one, one this evening and one tomorrow afternoon. Again, the information and registration links is in the link that is in the chat. And so, in that unlikely event, we will ask people to keep their remarks to two minutes and then ask folks who can attend another hearing to do so and allow those who are unable to attend another hearing to have some airtime today. I don't suspect that's going to happen. So again, the protocol, if you will, for offering oral testimony today is in the chat there. And as soon as Lisa's done with her overview presentation, we'll let folks know if—to expect whether two or three minutes to offer your testimony. And we do, in fact—and Lisa will review this— your oral testimony today is, for sure, part of the public record and will be taken into consideration as we review public comments on these draft regulations. We also encourage you, in addition, to submit your written comments, and Lisa's presentation will provide instructions on that. Let me pause there and ask my team if I forgot anything. And not seeing anything, then I'll introduce you to Lisa Rhodes, our Wetlands Program Chief, and she will offer a brief presentation, an overview of the proposed regs, and then we'll turn to the oral testimony.
All right. Thank you, Stephanie, and good afternoon, everybody, and thank you for joining us today. We appreciate your time. I am going to go through very fast this overview of the proposed regulations, about 15 minutes, hopefully, so that we can get to as many testimonies as people want to have or as many people as are, you know, would like to speak. So, beginning with—we'll start with we're going to—I'm first going to give an overview of the coastal regulation proposal, the land subject to coastal storm flowage standards and the other coastal regulations that we're proposing. And then I will give an overview of the stormwater regulation changes we are proposing. And then finally, we'll give you an overview of the schedule and how you can provide your written comments. So, starting with the proposal for land subject to coastal storm flowage, this is a resource area that has been regulated under the Wetlands Protection Act since the very beginning that the act has been in existence, but we've never had standards. And so, we are proposing to have performance standards in land subject to coastal storm flowage. The reason is that land subject to coastal storm flowage, in its natural condition, absorbs wave energy and floodwater movement, prevents erosion, and dissipates storm flow energy from coastal storms and sea level rise. We believe that these new standards will reduce storm and flood damage on development, will reduce the risk to public health and safety, and will protect, you know, most importantly, the natural function of the floodplain to provide these functions. And in all the years we've been working on these standards, you know, we've come to learn that—and we've already known—that it's not just an environmental protection that's needed. Strong standards in the coastal floodplain are also needed to keep Massachusetts strong economically. And I refer you to an article in Commonwealth Magazine in October of 2022 where they referenced the credit rating agencies, and one in particular, S&amp;P, who rated Massachusetts' economy moderately negative because of our coastal exposure. Specifically, they noted that the combined Boston and Cape Cod area exposes the state to significant economic disruption following a high-impact event. And so, implementing these standards in land subject to coastal storm flowage, you know, will not only be good for environmental reasons, but will keep the Massachusetts economy strong. The way that the standards are laid out is that what you'll be required to do would be based on where your activity is being done in the coastal floodplain or inland subject to coastal storm flowage. There are three zones that the regulations focus on. The velocity zone is the most seaward zone. And then behind that, more inland, is the A-zone, which is divided into two zones. The more seaward zone is the moderate wave-action zone, or the MOA-zone. And the more landward zone is called the MEWA-zone, or the minimal wave-action zone. So, these zones are shown on the FEMA map. And the way to determine, you know, which zone you're in is to go to the FEMA Map Service Center, and that is where you'll be able to see where the V-zone is. And then, this line here between the MOA and the MEWA-zone, called the LIMWA, or the limit of moderate wave action, is how you determine where the MOA-zone is and where the MEWA-zone is on your site. And Mass DEP will be providing extensive information, you know, following promulgation of the regulations for conservation commissions and others on how to find these zones. So, when you're going and you're looking at the proposed standards for land subject to coastal storm flowage, there's a few key things to keep in mind. The first thing you do is determine whether your project or your activity is in another wetland resource area, such as a dune or a beach. If it is, you would be required to meet the standards that currently exist for that resource area. However, there's a few exceptions, which I'll talk about in a minute in the next slide. The next thing you would look at is which zone you're in, in land subject to coastal storm flowage. Are you in the velocity zone, the MOA-zone, or the MEWA-zone? Then you would determine whether your project's in new development or redevelopment, and there's different standards for each type of activity. Next, you would look at whether your project is eligible for a limited project, either in the existing regulations or the proposed ones. And those are activities that where the issuing authority has discretion in applying the standards. And then finally, there are new standards for nature-based shoreline protection that everyone should be looking at. So, I spoke on the last slide about the exceptions. So, if your project is in another resource area, you would follow those existing wetland resource area standards with a few exceptions, and they are shown up here on the slide. No new structures in the velocity zone. New buildings within the moderate wave-action zone, the most seaward part of the A-zone, must be elevated under the LSCSF standards or the current dune standards or barrier beach standards or the building code, whichever is higher. For work on a coastal bank that does not supply sediment or work in rocky intertidal shores, those must meet the LSCSF standards, even if you're in those areas. And then finally, the LSCSF standards do not apply to marine industrial uses in designated port areas. Just going quickly through the key standards for the different zones. In the velocity zone, the standard for the V-zone is no adverse effect. Again, no new buildings in the velocity zone. And but—and there are limited activities that are allowed, such as walkways, boating facilities, docks, piers, et cetera. You can see some of them listed here. And also, limited projects, as I mentioned earlier. If you're in a limited project or an existing one or a proposed one, there is discretion on the part of the issuing authority. Under the—in the MOA-zone or the moderate wave-action zone, the buildings must allow unobstructed flow during the base flood elevation plus two feet. There's a limited waiver provided for the two feet, if you can demonstrate certain things. And the same activities that are allowed for the V-zone shown above are also allowed in the moderate wave-action zone, and there's a section in the standards that show that. In the minimal wave-action zone, which is the landward-most zone of the A-zone on the FEMA map, buildings must be—new buildings must be elevated on piles or solid foundation with one additional foot above base flood elevation. Certain areas within the buffer zone of another resource area may be required to elevate. Fill should be avoided or structures that redirect flow or increase flooding. And there are a number of other standards that are listed in the regulations, in the proposed regulations for the MEWA-zone. For redevelopment, the standards are different. You must improve existing conditions, meaning, you know, things such as reducing pavement, removing restrictions and providing storage are things that would improve existing conditions. There is no reconstruction allowed seaward, more seaward than the existing development or bigger than the existing development, so it can't be bigger than the existing footprint. But no new—but—even though there are no new buildings in the velocity zone, damage reconstruction or substantial improvement on open piles can occur in the velocity zone. Elevation on open piles for certain work in any zone could be required, although historic structures are exempt from the elevation requirements. And there are certain provisions for highly-developed areas, areas that are where impervious surfaces predominate, including in the MEWA-zone or the most landward part of the A-zone, placement of fill for flood control is allowed, as long as there's no redirection of wave energy onto other properties. And elevation of seawalls or construction of berms for flood control purposes in the MOA-zone or the more seaward part of the A-zone would be allowed if it's part of a flood control project or supported by a public agency. There are additional—so, moving on from land subject to coastal storm flowage, there are additional resilience regulations proposed for coastal areas, including a limited project for roadway elevation that—when roadways are at risk from sea level rise. And a limited project for roadway and water-dependent uses for relocation if they're at risk from sea level rise. And there are—you know, both of these limited projects are subject to certain conditions. Some are shown here. There's a provision for scientific test projects for projects that test wetland response to climate change. And there's also a provision that promotes nature-based coastal resiliency projects and, you know, requires proponents to look at these as options. Okay, moving on to the stormwater standards. The purpose for updating the stormwater standards are several. One is to update outdated precipitation data to reflect current conditions and currents increasing storms. One is to align as best as possible with the EPA MS4 general permit. Another goal is to promote environmentally sensitive site design. And finally, our goal is to update our now-over-15-year-old stormwater handbook. This slide shows the existing 10 stormwater standards, and I will give a high-level overview of the ones in blue. The first four in blue, two, three, four, and seven are existing standards that are the most—you know, that have the most change. And standard 11 is a proposed new standard. Starting with standard two, which is the stormwater standard for peak rate attenuation, projects are required to be designed so the post-development peak discharge rates don't exceed pre-development peak discharge rates. And this standard isn't proposed to change. However, the precipitation data that is required to be used to do the design will—is proposed to be changed from the current Technical Paper 40 precipitation atlas that is now over 60 years old to the new NOAA 14 Atlas that was published in 2015 and updated in 2019. Although, rather than use the fitted or average value of the NOAA 14 Atlas, we are proposing to require use of the 90% of the published upper confidence interval to reflect current storms that are being observed. And we call that NOAA+. For redevelopment, the current standard is maximum extent practicable. You must meet the standard to the maximum extent practicable, and this is not proposed to be changed. The new standard would be you must meet the standard to the maximum extent practicable. Only, you would need to use NOAA+ in the calculation rather than the TP40 standard. The standard three is for recharge, and the standard requires that annual recharge from the post-development site shall approximate annual recharge from the pre-development site based on soil type. We are proposing that one inch of recharge be required for A, B, and C soils. And for D soils, it would be one inch to the maximum extent practicable. And that is for all four of those soils if you're using the static method. We are proposing to allow additional methods, such as the dynamic and continuous simulation methods, and those would be presumed to meet the one inch. We have, at the advice of our advisory committee, conducted an additional evaluation of the one-inch standard, and we are considering going to adopting a 0.8 standard instead of the one inch. And those—the evaluation is online at the link that Stephanie put in the chat. You can read up on that, and we are seeking comment on that proposal. For redevelopment, the standard currently is maximum extent practicable, and we're proposing to keep that standard, the maximum extent practicable standard, only it would be maximum extent practicable of one inch. And standard four is the pollutant removal standard. That standard is the most important one that we had to align with EPA in the MS4 general permit. Our current standard is to remove 80% of the average annual load of total suspended solids. And our proposed standard is to—for new development is to remove 90% total suspended solids and 50% of total phosphorus. And off-site mitigation would not be allowed, since it's a new site. We presume it could be designed to meet that. For redevelopment, it's currently a maximum extent practicable standard, and we are proposing that redevelopment projects meet 80% TSS removal and 60% total phosphorus removal to align with EPA MS4. Only, rather than have a maximum extent practicable standard here, we are proposing that most projects would fully meet the standard. And that is because the impaired waters in Massachusetts are growing and not becoming reduced. And so, we know we need a change in this standard to try to remove some more of the impaired waters from our list. We are proposing to allow off-site mitigation for standard four redevelopment and also for standard three redevelopment. And there are a number of exceptions to this standard that would continue to be maximum extent practicable, like most housing units, nine lots or less. Single-family houses are continued to be not subject to the stormwater standards at all. Roadway maintenance and other—there are some other exceptions that are cited in the standards. And then, finally, our proposed new standard 11 would just reinforce the need for compliance with total maximum daily loads. So, basically, the way this would work is if your project is discharging pool water that currently has a TMVL on it for phosphorus, nitrogen, pathogens, or metals, you would need to use certain stormwater control measures. And we have a new table in the stormwater handbook that shows which stormwater measures would be allowed if you are discharging to that type of impaired water. In addition, a long-term pollution prevention plan would need to be implemented, and standards three and four would need to be met. That is, if you're new development, you would need to meet it for the new development standard. If you're redevelopment, you would need to meet the redevelopment standard. Our schedule is that—we, as Stephanie mentioned earlier, we have another public hearing tonight, starting at 6:00 PM, and a third public hearing tomorrow, scheduled for 1:00 PM. And we encourage you to come to those if you're interested. But in any event, submit your comments in writing. And to do so, you would either send an electronic submittal, which is preferred, to this address here, dep.wetlands@mass.gov. Or, in lieu of that, you can send paper comments to myself. Attention Wetlands 401 Resilience Comments, and you can see the address here. Mass DEP, BWR 100 Cambridge Street, Suite 900, Boston, Mass 02134. And with that—no, sorry, 02114. With that, I am going to now turn it back to Stephanie to open the floor for your testimonies. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lisa. Before we do that, let me—I know there's been several folks who have joined us since we talked about the sort of protocol for today's hearing. So, just a quick reminder, today is a public hearing at which we just concluded offering a brief summary of the proposed regulatory changes. And we will now accept oral testimony. This is not a Q&amp;A session. For those who would like to review both the more extensive presentation that we offered at the Q&amp;A—at the public information sessions or who would also like to listen to or view the recordings of those meetings, please scroll up in the chat, and you will see that Victoria Wu or Tori Wu posted a link. And at that link, you will find all the materials and recordings from those public information sessions, as well as information to register for additional public hearings, if you would like, as well as all the information about how to submit your public comments by the March 1 deadline. The other thing I will just reiterate is that if you would like to offer oral testimony today, which will become part of the record, please add your name to the chat, your name and affiliation, to the chat, and we will call on you. And so, when we made that announcement earlier, we have a sum total of three folks who have so far added their name into the queue to provide comments today. So, obviously, others who indicate their interest, we will accommodate you as well. But it seems like we certainly can generously allow three minutes each while we see if there's other folks who would like to offer testimony. So, with that, we will start with Derek Berg, Contech Engineered Solutions. You can please unmute yourself. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you, and I am Derek Berg, in fact, from Contech Engineered Solutions. And thank you all for the opportunity. It's hard to believe it's been more than 15 years. I did participate in the stakeholder meetings that led to the 2008 updates. But I'll start by saying there's lots of good stuff in here. I focused mostly on the stormwater standards and the proposed updates to the manual. So, you know, congrats to y'all for moving it forward. I think there's some huge leaps forward to turning this into a much more progressive program. Obviously, some things that love to see fine-tuned, and I do plan to submit written comments. But I'll keep focused today on just sort of a singular issue that I think is important to flag. I have contacted the department on this one before. But as it stands now, the proposed updates to the stormwater standards and the manual still include references to the TARP Tier 2 field testing protocol as the primary means of evaluating innovative and manufactured treatment devices. And I wanted to point out that that protocol is now nearly 25 years old. Speaking of things that have some age on it, it has not gone through any meaningful update in more than 15 years. There actually is no more TARP entity. You know, TARP has effectively been dissolved. There's no more TARP website, and the only references to that protocol really are the one that's hosted on Mass DEP's website. All of the original TARP states have now updated their programs to reference the TARP protocol, which is currently considered the gold standard, you know, within stormwater monitoring communities. In addition to the original TARP states, all of the New England states have programs in place that reference and allow that protocol to be used. Most recently, Connecticut has rolled out a new manual that's going to take effect in March that has language very similar to yours and very similar standards. But it literally just basically replaces uh, TARP with tape as the preferred means of guidance. Similarly, uh, the academic and research community is now predominantly using the tape protocol. There's really no new TARP data being collected. And uh, I feel this one's important because as it stands right now. If that reference is left in place, you effectively create a roadblock where you don't have new data being collected, no new studies are coming in. Uh, and, and it sort of trickles down throughout the stormwater community. Where it creates more work for the engineers, more work for the municipal folks, the concombs, and I know even the P staff has asked to look at, you know, submissions on this front. Uh, often which are deemed, you know, at least partially out of compliance because they're not in compliance with that twenty-five-year-old protocol. That isn't in use anymore. So that's really the core of my testimony is to take a strong look at that. It would be great to see that. Uh, brought forward into the future with the rest of your standards. And uh, I'll provide you some more detail and examples of what others are doing when I submit the written comments. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, all right, uh, please pardon my pronunciation here. Luchika Hiller, City of Somerville?
Uh, perfect pronunciation, Stephanie. Thank you. Um, my name is Luchika Hiller. I am the Stormwater Program. Um, manager for the city of Somerville. And part of the testimony today, um, that I want to share with Mass D P is as a municipal. Employee, you know, we've been waiting for the Stormwater Handbook for um. A number of years, um, I won't say how many, maybe four. And um, although we are excited to, to have it um, in our laps to read. It's, it's really hard to, to find the staff and the time to review um. The proposed changes to three large regulations and most importantly. Uh, reviewing the eight hundred and sixty pages of the Stormwater Handbook. To, to understand the changes, right? Uh, to understand the implications that uh. These updates will have on our day-to-day operations, our ordinances, our bylaws, our regulations. And um. Just to let you know that you will probably receive some letters to request for an extension on the, the public comment piece. Uh, we, a lot of us are looking at these regulations with the limited time we have and at the handbook, trying to understand what. Um, what is not aligned with the MS four still, uh, that's, that's one of our biggest concerns, so um. Definitely these regulations coming in during the holidays and a busy sort of storm. Uh, season has um, has provided very difficult for us to find the time, the necessary time to. To truly understand and provide meaningful uh, comments back to, to you. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, um, next up is George Dimakarakos.
Thank you. Yep, George Dimakarakos from Stamsky and McNary in Acton. Um, uh, there's a lot of good work that was, has gone into uh, all of the. All of this regulations and stormwater management, uh, I will echo the time, um, we're a private firm, but. Um, w- w- we really need more time to, now that the regulations are dovetailing with the, the stormwater handbook. And all of that, it's, you know, it's sort of where the rubber hits the road, so. Uh, I just want to point out some of the things that we think uh, problematic and specifically. Um, in the wetland regs, but they're also in the water quality regs, but uh. Uh, page seventy-four refers to setbacks, um. And I haven't had time to see what the caveat really means where it says that setback can be reduced. In accordance with the handbook, shall be presumed to meet the sta- setback, but now the regulations are putting stormwater setbacks directly. Into the regulations and it, it really um, creates some problems. Uh, first it defines uh, any component of a stormwater management system, so. One must, has to take that for any pipe, swale, catch basin, anything like that, um, that. But prohibiting all those things within the setbacks identified, it creates an enormous burden and problem. Um, I'll jump to uh, interim wellhead protection areas are now identified as something that the setback has to be ten feet. Outside of an interim wellhead protection area, which is an arbitrary sort of calculation that you do on a public water supply well. Um, zone one makes sense, um, to keep things out of there. Um, uh, zone two is actually sort of more sensitive than interim wellhead protection area, but then you get to interim wellhead protection area. Which should really be less protected. It's an arbitrary calculation, the interim uh, protection area. Um, and s- uh, towns like Boxborough have significant portions of the town. Covered by interim wellhead protection areas. So basically, if you go to the mass mapper and you turn on. The I W P A layer, you're basically saying you can't have any stormwater controls in those areas. That's kind of devastating for them. Um, uh, surface waters, including wetlands, uh, fifty feet. Setback to anything, I assume that means any pipe or anything like that. Um, you can see that's gonna create problems when you're crossing wetlands especially and you're gonna have to raise your roads higher. Create more fill and more impacts, but uh, shouldn't really be preventing any component. From being fifty feet, you know, it makes sense to have infiltration measures, be outside fifty, that's already the case. Um, property line of, you know, ten feet, putting a ten-foot setback to stormwater in a wetland regulation. To a property line does not make sense to us. Um, first of all, a lot of times you're doing, you know, subdivisions and. Things where you control the entire land, there are lot lines all over the place, you'd create easements, you might be near a right-of-way, public right-of-way. You don't need ten feet to access some of these stormwater measures. Um, doesn't really belong in stormwater regulations. Now, there's a two-foot.
Pardon me, just, just pardon me one second. Um, I, I don't think we're gonna be short on time, so I don't want to cut you off. You are past your three minutes. Uh, and so feel free to continue, but also you have very detailed comments, which we appreciate. Please be sure to also submit those in writing.
I will, okay. Uh, same thing, seasonal high groundwater, two feet, the bottom of a catch basin is all often in the groundwater. Uh, pub- pub- public, I'm sorry, private wells, a hundred-foot setback, title five allows a. Uh, septic tank to be fifty feet from a well. Now we can't put any stormwater within a hundred feet, doesn't make any sense. Uh, the biggest and most devastating one I think is slope, uh, being five percent slope, a hundred feet. Away from an infiltration basin, surface exposed or underground infiltration trench, infiltrating by retention area. That is a monumental thing. I, I don't think anyone on this public hearing or maybe few people have properties that are one hundred feet away from a slope of five percent. Five percent slope is one foot in twenty feet. That's a very shallow slope. That's the allowable slope for a handicap accessible walkway to get, to put in context. There, uh, there are certain towns that will have no lots that will meet that requirement. Very, very impactful, really need to reevaluate that. It's not based on science. Because we have thousands of systems that are in a much less restrictive condition than that. All over the state absolutely is uh, uh, not based on, I think it probably existed somewhere in some other states handbook and it. Trickle down to, to us, really needs to be reconsidered. The, those things seem subtle, that will have a tremendous impact on the, the housing crisis. Um, we again want to echo more time to let us really figure out what all this stuff needs. Me- uh, means, read through all the regulations, see where relief really does exist from some of these setbacks. Um, and have case studies where we take a property. That, that, you know, the department thinks can comply with everything. And I, I think you'll be very surprised at how we can, we as engineers can. Can tell you where it does not comply with a lot of this stuff. So um, case studies uh, should be part of this and more time. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. And we, we will be looking at that, so we appreciate those comments and I concur with Stephanie, please submit those.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, okay, we have a few more folks who have added their names to the queue. Next up is Michelle Grisenda. Just uh, when, when I call on you, uh, pardon me if I mispronounce your name. Uh, please unmute yourself and introduce yourself with your affiliation, even though I know you, Michelle.
Thank you, Stephanie. Hello, everyone. I'm Michelle Grisenda. I'm speaking on behalf of Massachusetts Society of Municipal Conservation Professionals. We are a nonprofit that represent uh, commu- uh, conservation professionals throughout the state of Massachusetts. Um, I, we wholeheartedly agree with Luchika and George that um, A, we're, we're very grateful that. Uh, D E P has uh, spent a considerable amount of time coming up with proposed regulation changes that. Hopefully will help Massachusetts become a more climate resilient state. Um, however, the amount of material that's been um, drafted. And the amount of time needed to review it is quite tremendous. Um, so given the uh, extent um, and technical detail of the proposed changes, particularly the Stormwater Handbook. Uh, which alone is eight hundred and sixty pages. Um, we, we recognize our members need more time to review the draft proposals and formulate a meaningful feedback. A mere sixty-day comment period following the release of the documents um, during the holiday period is not sufficient for busy professionals. To properly review such a volume of information, digest the consequences. And provide suggestions to D E P for necessary improvements. So that together we can craft regulations that will point us towards our common goals of wetland protection restoration. Uh, MSMCP will be formally submitting a uh, letter later today or tomorrow. Uh, requesting that the public comment period for um, the proposed wetland regs. Uh, be extended sixty days to April thirtieth of twenty twenty-four and that D E P offer opportunities. Um, to statewide professional organizations such as MSMCP to join working groups. Uh, sessions to help D E P understand, address, reconcile, and incorporate the comments received. Um, so we are um, in, just beginning to formulate public comments, uh, but we're recognizing with our full-time schedules. Um, and even meeting off-hours, it's just being, it's very difficult to really start consolidating all this. And now that we're um, nearly a month away from the deadline, we're recognizing the need for an extension. So I do hope that D E P will take this under consideration and I, we will be submitting a letter later today or tomorrow.
Thank you, Michelle.
Okay, um, next up is Catherine Lang.
Hello, hi Stephanie, thank you. Uh, my name's Catherine Lang. I'm the Policy Director for the Massachusetts Rivers Alliance. We are a statewide organization with eighty-six member groups dedicated to protecting and restoring the rivers and streams of the Commonwealth. Um, our, our first comment uh, is a, a logistical one following those who came before me. And we are also interested in the, the extension of the public comment period. I know D E P is really excited to get these regs out there and in practice, but. You know, we've been digging into them since they were announced on December twenty-second and. Uh, because there are several regulatory components to cover, we still have a lot of detail left to, to go through. Um, and as I mentioned, we have our eighty-six member organizations. Many of them care a lot about these regulations and certainly care about climate resilience. Um, and want to understand what's being proposed fully, but many of them haven't been able to digest what has been put forth. Um, particularly as others have said, the Stormwater Handbook, which we are so excited to see put forth. So even a two-week to four-week extension would be really helpful for us. You've heard from both the private and public sector, so I'm here to echo that call from the NGO uh, sector as well, that we really appreciate more time. Um, as far as the content of the regulations, overall, we're really happy with the direction that Mass D E P is going in. I'm really happy with the acknowledgement of our change in climate and that we need to adapt to those new conditions. We know there's been the years of work behind these, so we're grateful to see this package come out now, especially. Um, I'll, I'll name the, the requirement for the consideration of nature-based methods in projects. And the provision allowing for salt marsh migration, which those are exciting to see. Um, we would like to see D E P immediately after these are, are processed and promulgated. Start work on the two-point-O package. We've been excited to hear that you all are planning to start that up at some point in the future. We would be. Um, interested in participating in that process. There's a lot um, in the one-point-O draft regulations that we think is a good step. And could, could be strengthened considerably in the two-point-O process. For example, um, the updating of the scientific standards used, that's been a, a long time need that we're glad to see addressed here. But we are concerned that tying them to NOAA Plus, as opated as that is. Um, does leave the agency and then the regs to be outdated pretty soon. Um, we would love to see instead of data on, on current conditions, adding into that forward-looking projections. Um, so that we can plan for the storms that we know are coming in the future to, to allow this data to be dynamic. So the projects do stay updated um, for maximum impact. So Mass Rivers will be submitting written comments with more extensive detail on, on our feedback. But thank you again for having the time today.
Thank you, Catherine.
Thank you. Okay, uh, next up is Christopher Lucas.
Good afternoon, thank you. Um, I think uh, there's a common theme here today and I'm just gonna reiterate it as well. I, I know D P spent years bringing forth the regulations and the new stamp, Stormwater Handbook. I think as, as many different interest groups here have indicated, and I'm sure other comments are coming in. Common theme is that the community needs more time, you know, D P spent years putting this together. And I, I agree that sixty days is not sufficient for the community, working professionals. To have time to go through a nine-hundred-page technical document, provide fair and reasonable comment. Um, I, I would urge D P to seriously listen to this group here and extend the comment period, you know. Thirty days minimum, sixty would be more than fair to allow the community and, you know, to truly listen to the groups here would be fair. Um, you know. That, that's really how at this time, I do plan on submitting written comments, technical comments later. Um, but I, I would, I really urge D P to hear everyone here and, and grant an extension. And if you're going to do so, do so sooner rather than later. Um, obviously, that deadline's looming and we need time to review this if you're not going to grant that extension. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, okay, at the moment, there is one more person in the queue, so this is just a reminder. Um, for anybody who would like to offer comments or oral testimony today, just put your name and affiliation in the chat and we will call on you. Um, and the next up is Trevor Fletcher.
Hey, how's it going? Uh, I just want to reiterate what a lot of other people have said uh, over and over again was, you know, just a, additional time and uh. Not only that is, you know, once all these comments and testimony are taken into consideration. I think uh, maybe a good idea would be to go over the changes that were made to the document, the eight-hundred-sixty-page stormwater document. After the comments were, you know, taken into consideration, so we know what address, what problems that were arisen. Have been addressed and where they have been addressed and what the compromise was, if there was any uh, stuff like that. Um, one other uh, item that kind of keeps coming back to, uh, a lot of people are questioning about is the redevelopment. And I know uh, I listened to a couple of things and how the, the redevelopment was really the uh, the changes to that was because of the TMDLs uh. You know, not being reduced enough. Uh, I didn't know if the department had, you know, looked into, you know. Maybe keeping some options of just reducing impervious area for areas that don't discharge to waters with TMDLs. Uh, and maybe just make the requirement of the eighty percent TSS and the phosphorus removal just for uh, areas that discharge those areas that have those problems. Uh, that would uh, you know, not free up uh, some design criteria for uh, for us engineers. Um, one thing I was really happy to see was the uh, the E S S Ds of, you know, keeping uh, impervious area. Uh, less than fifteen percent would, uh, you know, alleviate recharge and treatment uh, on sites, which is really good. We're kind of out west, so we have a lot of larger lots and, you know, residential construction, so most of the time we are under that fifteen percent threshold. One problem I did see with that was uh, there's a stipulation in that that requires uh, that actually uh, excludes. Sites that have soils with less than uh, twenty-four inches of groundwater. But in the same thing, it, uh, it tells you that you have to exclude wetlands and everything like that from your lot area that can be counted as non-impervious. So if you have wetlands on site, clearly the groundwater is gonna be within twenty-four inches. So if you have wetlands on site, the regulation right now basically just says you're not allowed to take that credit. So uh, that definitely needs to be uh, looked at. And, and yeah, just one, one thing that I started looking through is all the setbacks and everything like that, you know. With the catch basin, when, when you're designing a roadway and you need catch basins, if you need that two foot to a deep sump. You're talking about needing, requiring groundwater be deeper than ten feet. And that's not without a cut in the road. So if you're cutting the road in, then you're talking, you know, twelve, fourteen feet to groundwater, which you're not going to see unless you have an undisturbed sandbank. So those are a couple of the problems I saw. And one other item, I know a lot of towns around us and I think I heard somewhere it was like seventy percent of the towns in Massachusetts that have adopted. New stormwater regulations that require the ninety percent T S S removal and the one inch of recharge. Which, you know, we're coming around to and, you know. Really starting to get the gist of that design process and. My question would be, yeah, not question, but I guess one thing to look into is how the site credits. Once they're implemented are gonna be able to be applicable to these towns bylaws. I'm not sure if there's an easy way to. Streamline that in so that towns are, you know, saying, oh, well, you need. You know, ninety percent T S S removal and recharge. And then we're looking at the Stormwater Manual saying. Well, we have a credit here that allows us to exempt this area. And, you know, going back and forth now that all these towns have new regulations, it might cause some problems in the future. So I don't know if there was a way to streamline that. So. Those are just some items that I saw and I'll continue to look at things as we go through and. Yeah. Thank you so much.
Thanks very much for that. Appreciate it.
You'd think we put out. A pay, a, a page-turning. Crime drama novel. This is, this is great. People are really digging in. I mean, we, we very much appreciate your, your comments and delighted that folks are starting to dig into this. Okay, next up is Karen Strauss. Please unmute yourself, introduce yourself and offer your comments.
Hi, I'm Karen Strauss. I'm Chair of the Eastham Conservation Commission. And I decided I was gonna listen, but I decided to speak because I want to add my voice to the. People who are requesting an extension on the comment period. As a conservation commission, we're made up of volunteers. We meet. Twice a month with a heavy schedule and we received information on the updates. From M A C C, thank you for that, on December twenty-third. These are very large updates across multiple sets of regulations. And you're hearing from all these professionals say they don't have time to review it. Imagine a conservation commission. Made up of volunteers, many of who have. Regular jobs, trying to wade through all of this and get meaningful comments to you in the, in the time period allowed. And, and we started to dig into it and, and. Intend to submit comments, but we would appreciate. More time and maybe consider in the future a little more staggered approach when you're releasing such monumental changes across so many regulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
Right. Thank you, Karen. All right, I'm gonna fill some airspace for a moment. To see if there's any other folks who would like to offer comments today. If anybody is. Unable to access the chat, feel free to just raise your hand, using the raise hand feature. Or if neither of those buttons is working for you. You can unmute yourself and let us know that you would like to offer comments today. We want to make sure that everybody who wants to offer comments today can. And there is currently nobody else in the queue. I will also point out that a couple of times in the chat. There are links that you will find to our website where you can see the. The more detailed presentations that we gave at the three public information sessions on this regulation package as well as. For those of you. Who really want to torture yourself, you can listen to the recordings that include both the presentations from, from Mass D P and our consultant team. As well as the Q and A and discussion that was had on these, on these topics. And those can all be accessed from the link that is in the chat a couple of times. And with that. I see no other hands. And nobody else in the chat. So Lisa, if you can easily. Put that last slide up that, that lets folks know how to submit public comments. And, and obviously elephant in the room, we heard many of you. Today quite, quite clearly that. You are requesting an extension. And we will certainly. Take that under consideration and also to several of your points, if that is going to happen, you would want to know sooner rather than later. So message received. Up on the screen at the moment. Are the instructions for how to submit public comments? We prefer them electronically, but of course we'll take them. And by paper mail. And with that, I will just remind you that there is another public hearing this evening. Starting at six P M and another one tomorrow, a, a, a third and final one tomorrow at one P M. If any of your colleagues weren't unable to make it today, please let them know. And Lisa, unless you have any final words, that concludes this afternoon's public hearing on the proposed updates to the wetland. Regulations.
No, I just want to thank everybody who's here today and everybody who commented or didn't comment, everybody who's. Who's pouring through the Stormwater Handbook and, and the regs. We appreciate your, your being here. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Take care, everybody. Have a great rest of your day.